Hello, everyone. I'd like to call to order the meeting of February 11th. Please silence all of your cell phones. If you do need to have any sidebar conversation, I just ask that you please go out in the hallway. Alright, can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we get started, I will say that Craig's not able to make it tonight with prior notice, so if we can just make note of that, please. Can we have approval of minutes, payroll, and warrants? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 21st?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Can I have a roll call? Mrs. Downing?
Aye.
Mrs. Gomes?
Aye.
Mr. Terrell?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Alright, and can I have a motion to approval of all payroll and warrants?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, Mrs. Downing?
Aye.
Mrs. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Terrell? Yes, thank you. Alright, so for delegation, this is a time that I do open it up for delegation if anyone would like to speak. We do have a three-minute policy in effect that you can go up and talk about something we prefer on the agenda, but if not, we are open to listening about it. Even though this meeting is held in public, it is not a public meeting, so it is a school committee body meeting. If you do have any complaints regarding administration or student issues, we do ask that you go through the proper channels. Would anyone like to speak at this time? Nope. Okay, so I will close the delegation portion of the meeting. We do not have any old business, so for new business, the superintendent to report Dr. Bailey, we will start with the AYSA donation for the big toy.
Right, and I just want to make note, there was a typo and it says little toy, it's supposed to say big toy.
Toy, okay.
And at this time, I would like to call up Mr. Paul Masaraco to the podium. He would like to present tonight on a donation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paul Masaraco. I am the president of the Kushner Youth Soccer. So we talked about making a donation to the school for the big toy, and so the school committee came back and told us what they were like, and I brought it back to my board, and we have approved that amount, so I would like to present a check to the school committee for the big toys.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. That's fantastic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you because I know once you and your organization heard about our recent upgrades with the big toy, you went back to your organization and funded the most recent upgrades, which are the swings and some other equipment on that big toy, so thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, personnel matters. You have in your packet, a report, it's not very big. We had one teacher who started as a long-term substitute preschool teacher, and that's listed there. No other changes. In your packet, on the next one, you have an out-of-state field trip request for grade six. They want to go to the Pawtucket Red Sox, and I guess the organization is doing things with the STEM curriculum, so they are requesting to attend that field trip on May 21st, and because it's an out-of-state field trip, we need school committee approval.
Sure, okay. Everyone's had a chance to review it. Does anyone have any questions? Alright, so can we have a motion to approve the out-of-state sixth-grade field trip?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next, we have on the agenda the Student Opportunity Act, and this is a new law that the legislature put into effect for districts all across the state to receive an increase in state aid. And it's not an equal distribution of money, but it's basically to promote equity across the district. So you'll notice that districts with a higher poverty rate, you know, some of the area cities get millions of dollars. A place like a Kushner, not so much. But I just want to review this background because it is new to all of us, and there's a quick turnaround, and in March, we'll be voting on a plan that we have to present to the state. So in your packet, you have a PowerPoint, and I know that Mr. Oliver has it up on the screen, but we will just begin looking at it. So basically, it's an effort to close the achievement gap. There you go, thank you. So for the subgroups, whether it's a high-risk, special needs, we want to, all districts are required to submit a three-year evidence-based plan that they, to the commissioner, that they will provide in terms of what are we going to do, what is our plan to improve that achievement gap. And because many districts don't get a large amount of funds, we will be completing a short form, which is two pages. So if you go to page three, there's four requirements for district evidence-based plans, and one is evidence-based practices. So they give you pretty much a menu that you can pick from, or you can come up with your own as a district. So that's the first thing. The second thing is the parent community engagement. So for example, our district is getting over $38,000, which is a similar increase to what we've seen in past years. It's just that now we have to formally put a plan together of how we're going to close this achievement gap. So I met with the leadership team recently, and the leadership team decided that they really wanted to continue with a focus that we're already doing with our strategic plan. So because math has been such a focus in the middle school, we really wanted to look at our subgroup data on special ed, high-needs group, and so for example, parent community engagement, we plan to bring this up at a PAC meeting. So things that are already in place, because we certainly don't have enough money for extra positions or things like that, so we're trying to really align it with things that we're already currently doing in our district plan. And then obviously, they want to know is what resources we're going to put towards this, and then how are we going to measure it. So that will all be included in that short form. And it's meant to basically continue doing what we're doing and doing the right thing. So we're on page four, so it's not meant to be this big plan, comprehensive plan. It's really meant to be aligned with what we're already doing in the district.
Paula, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Just, if I'm understanding this correctly, we're anticipating, does this mean we're anticipating $38,000 in additional Chapter 70 funding as a result of this Student Opportunity Act? Is that correct?
Yes, so it's $30 per student is how they calculate it. I don't know if you want to add on this, Mrs. Flynn, but my understanding is it's about $30 per student, and that's the calculation. So it comes out to $38,760.
Okay.
Which is in line with what we've always sort of received as an extra, so it's not...
It's not additional funding.
It's not a big additional funding at all for a Kushner.
Every year, we receive the minimum increase, which is a per-student amount. This year, it's $30. So for us, as Dr. Bailey said, it's $38,760 based on our enrollment of 1,292 students. So every year, we get that minimum per-student increase, except this year, districts now have to put a plan into place as to how they're going to spend it.
Okay, so regardless of getting additional funding, like some surrounding areas may, we still have to put forth this plan.
Exactly, so we're not getting any big increase. We're getting what we normally get.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
So the districts that get millions of dollars, they have a long form, and it's a much more comprehensive plan to justify how that money will be spent to close the achievement gaps. So we still have to do it, and I think it will keep our district very focused on the work.
Yep. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
I have, actually, sorry, one more question, Paula. So I know this is to bridge the gap for our lower-performing students, to get up to the average or median student. Is there a plan in there to maybe take some of the money, because we have additional funds to help the enrichment kids? Is that...
No, the focus of the Student Opportunity Act is to really focus on those subgroups that are not meeting standards.
So there wouldn't be additional funds somewhere else to help them?
Not for this, at this time. It doesn't mean that we can't look at that for something else, but for this particular law...
We have to use everything for this.
We have to basically focus the plan on the subgroups.
Okay.
I mean, this is just the money that comes from the state in support of public schools' Chapter 70 funds. So really, all the town of a Kushner is getting is $38,000 more than last year, and in terms of our budget, that isn't even enough to maintain the status quo.
So we're getting $38,000, because I'm...
More than last year, more than we received from the state last year, but it's not, I mean, it's nothing. The only thing new is that we now have to fill out this short form.
Thank you, sorry.
And say how we're dedicating funds from the school budget to close these achievement gaps.
Thank you.
So if you look at the next page, it just gives you some ideas. There's two-to-three commissioner priority strategies, and we did discuss those as a leadership team, but given the amount of money that we received, which, as Mrs. Flynn just pointed out, it's really maintaining what we have, we don't think we have a lot of extra money to put into these things, although you can apply for competitive grants. But we just wanted to let you know that this was, you know, this was a priority across the state. And then on page six, it just gives you examples of districts that, in the Commonwealth, that are using the short form versus the long form. And, you know, those cities to the right, some of them are getting millions of dollars extra, which is a big increase. And then on page seven, which I believe is pretty much the last section, it's a very quick turnaround. So this law just came in at the beginning of the year. Local school committees are required to vote on this plan once we develop it, so we have a really quick turnaround time to get our leadership team together to write this plan, and during the next school committee meeting in March, the school committee will be asked to vote on it. Once it's voted on, we will submit it to the Department of Education by the April 1st deadline. So it's a quick turnaround, and I can't stress enough, it's basically things that we're already doing aligned with our district strategy, but I just wanted you to be aware that this is new, you know, law, Student Opportunity Act, that just came through, and it's, you know, it's good because it does bring all districts up to par with each other in terms of money. Does anybody have any questions on the Student Opportunity Act?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so that plan is just to show Desi that, first of all, they're being supportive of what they're doing, of what we're doing, and providing the districts with the funds. Okay, the next thing is a superintendent evaluation. So as you know, the school committee asked me to get this moving from March due to the election in April. In your packets, I have all of the forms. I reviewed my middle-of-the-year progress last month. It's really nothing different, except to say that as far as the goals go, goals two, three, and four, I've pretty much made it this point. Goal number one has to do with the curriculum audit, that's still ongoing, but the idea of it will be finished by the end of the school year. We're moving into the elementary school. Dr. Roy and I just met with the staff today at the elementary school to get the surveys out to staff. We talked about what's going to happen, the assessments that we're requesting of them, the resources that they use, the input that they're going to have to help us with this audit. So that's fully in process, and I expect that you'll get an end-of-the-year report on that particular goal. The one thing that I did change up a little bit was just make, I made the agreed-upon form for my summative electronic versus a paper copy. So earlier today, I sent you out a link. I don't know if you saw it, but basically, you click on the link, and then I have samples of what that looks like in your packet. You fill it out, so it's going to ask you goal number one, rating, it's a drop-down menu, comments, goal number two, et cetera, standard one, standard two, et cetera. You can make comments, and then once you hit send, that will automatically go to Mrs. Benavides, and it will populate into an Excel program. So, I know we're getting fancy around here, right?
Nice.
It populates, and then she will be able to combine the evaluation into one evaluation, which the chair will present in March.
Yep.
So, you know, I just asked that you all have the link. I would take no more than two weeks to get that completed, so that we can put it together for the March school committee meeting. But within the packet, you have the rubric, the superintendent's rubric, you have my self-assessment, all of my updates on my evaluation, the evidence. Is there any questions at all? It's similar to what we did last year. The only difference is I wanted to try it electronically, just to see how that worked out.
Just keep in mind that as you're going through the rubric, if there's a piece of evidence that you're not, you know, there's things you're not sure of, and you say, oh, you know, I'd like more evidence on that, you do, please contact Dr. Bailey and ask, you have every right to ask her for whatever evidences that we'd like to see, you know, where are you at, so that if you're like on the fence with something, and you're looking for a little bit more data, just let her know, and she'll get you whatever it is that you need to make your decision.
Can we have a date, like an actual solid date together?
Sure.
Do you want to just pick a date and let us know?
Yes, I'll do it right now, just so that it's...
That would be fantastic.
Done.
I want to put it in right now.
We don't have a deadline.
No, if I don't have a...
Can we say no later than February 25th?
Okay.
Which is the Tuesday right after the vacation?
Okay, yep, perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item I have is substitute teacher job description. We did not have a substitute teacher job description, and we felt like it was necessary. We are starting to do more training with our substitutes. As a matter of fact, we have an orientation tomorrow for our new substitutes and Paris, substitute Paris. But we really felt like some job description was needed. So this is a brand-new job description, which is why it's on the agenda, because the school committee needs to vote for it in order for us to put it in place. So you've had time to review it, but I just wanted to, you know, let you know, at least we have a framework now, and we have a description to go by. So, and then the other thing that we're doing as an aside is, there's a packet that we put together for all substitutes, kind of like outlining some procedures and policies, names of people they should know in both buildings. It's a handbook for substitutes, so that will be reviewed with the folks tomorrow. So I want to thank the principals, Kim Betancourt, Kelly Benavides, everyone's been working hard to get this done.
So how would that work if we have orientation, say, tomorrow, and then three people want to become substitutes on Friday? What's that timeline look like? Will they have, will we do an orientation again, or...
So I don't think we'll do orientation again. Tomorrow's like a screening, I believe, and then, you know, obviously, it's pending reference checks.
Okay.
Quarries. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, but it gives our staff an opportunity to meet people as well, and we're always looking for substitutes, so I think it's a good opportunity and a good way to get people in, in a group setting. So we're trying this out this year. Yeah.
Alright, well, thank you for working on that.
So as far as the job description, I would just need the committee to vote, yes.
Okay, so no further questions before we bring it to vote? Alright, can I have a vote to accept the Kushner, I just want to look at the top. Kushner Public Schools Substitute Teacher, All Grade Levels Job Description.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, it's all set. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, Business Managers Report, Mrs. Flynn, Budget Summary Overview.
Okay, not too much has changed since we last met, so I'll just quickly go through the major changes. Some changes from when we spoke in January on the budget. We have in the salary surplus increased overall by just under $10,000. We have an increase in the surplus due to an unpaid leave of absence that we've extended out now that we're certain about it. And then we also, the surplus decreased for some additional consulting work for curriculum. So the net of that is just under $10,000. We also have a deficit now in out-of-district transportation. We had to add an additional route for an out-of-district placement in the past few weeks, so that out-of-district transportation line is now in deficit, about $19,000. Okay, but overall, we still have a surplus heading into June 30, so you can see that, the various, the total makeup. But like I said, we've reviewed this in the past, so those are the major, those are the only changes since last month. School lunch, again, nothing's changed. You have the reports for that, that remain steady. A quick update on the facilities. The town approved both the owner's project manager and the designer contracts for the schematic design phase, so both were submitted to the MSBA. The next step is to be on their next board meeting, depending on when those packages get submitted to, by the OPM to the, to MSBA, and at that point, they will make a final approval of our project, and we will need to go to town meeting for the project. Now I will say, it is cutting it close to some of the deadlines, and it would, the work needs to be done in the summer, clearly, so if it's not, if the package isn't ready for the MSBA, or if they can't put it on their April meeting, and it has to go to the next meeting, we do have two years to complete the project. So if the roof doesn't get, if we can't get it taken care of this summer, we do still have next summer to take care of it. And where we are coming up on the deadline, while it would be nice to get those, get that roof replaced this summer, it is really such a large project that it's not something that you want to rush, so the additional time may be beneficial to us. In the meantime, we do still have funds to make some repairs to the roof as needed. So luckily, this year, we haven't had as many repairs as last year, so we've been doing good with that. In terms of funding for the schematic design phase, which is where we're at now, to pay for the time of the owner's project manager, and for the designer, which is the architect, the fees we're putting there in contract, the OPM fee is not to exceed $15,000. That's per MSBA regulations. So that one won't be any more than $15,000. The fee for the schematic design phase from the architects is $63,200. So the max that we have, the total fees for the schematic design, I'm sorry, the designer fee is $48,200. The total fees, the 48 and the 15, total fees are $63,200. Currently, we have $47,915 remaining in our roof fund, so the balance of that, we'll need to take out of school building revolving, which is about $15,000. So, just so you're aware of that. When I have a firm cost on the OPM, like I said, it's not to exceed $15,000. So that's the update on the roof. The only other update I have is the ALIS materials that we talked about. We ordered them, the classroom curriculum materials, and they did come in, so those will be distributed out to the teachers for their review before putting them out to the students. And one final thing on the FY '21 budget, I just wanted to alert the public to some dates. We started work on our FY '21 budget. We do have the next school committee meeting, Wednesday, I mean, Tuesday, March 10th, here, is our public hearing on the school budget. That's when we'll have a presentation on the entire school budget for next year, so that's an important meeting to attend if people are interested in hearing about the school budget. And then the following night, on March 11th, here at Ford Middle School, we'll also be presenting basically the same presentation to the selectmen and the finance committee on the school budget. So that's two opportunities to hear.
And can I just add one thing? As you know, we talk to both building administrators, department heads, they work out budget requests through their staff, so it's the same procedure as last year, that everybody has input. So we will continue our meetings with them, we will continue our budget subcommittee meetings, and then we'll be ready for the budget hearing on the 10th, and then again on the 11th.
Can we just make sure that we do everything and anything we can to get that information out, that the public hearing is on 3/10? Anything you can think about, any emails, phone calls, put it on the website, text, I, anything. Anything we can do for the 10th and the 11th. I think that's just, I would love, I want people to come and listen and hear where we're, what we're looking at for our budget, where we're at for next year's budget, and that's the place to do it at. So I really want to make sure that we do our best, and that's all we can really do, but...
Sure.
I...
But it's been a very transparent process, again.
Of course, of course. And I think it's a great process. I just, we just, I just want to do our best, and then, you know, we can go back to people and say, well, it was posted here, 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 and no one showed up, because usually, we have very few people, unfortunately, at that meeting, and that's unfortunate. I would hope to fill the chairs. I unfortunately am not going to be able to make the March 11th meeting, so I will, I'm in Florida. Unfortunately, I'm not in this, I'm not here. I already have my flights booked, so I will probably put together a small statement for the Board of Selectmen, and probably reach out to them in the meantime, to see if they have any questions, or voice my concerns, so that they know my stance on the budget as well. Okay, the only question I have, Kristen, is, Mrs. Flynn, on the roof, just, I feel like every meeting, we bring it up, and I just want to make sure that we're clear, that I'm clear, in how this is going to work. So the fees are only for the schematic design, for pretty much the architect, and for everyone to come in and say, we've looked at everything, this is what's wrong with the roof, this is...
Well, that part has already been done.
Okay.
So this is the fees to decide what needs to be done, to put some of the bid documents together, to say, this, these are the specifications.
Okay, so once this is paid for, then we have to still get approval from the town to actually do the project?
Correct.
And that would be an article at this town meeting?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Around 600-something thousand.
Okay.
And we have to request the appropriation for the entire amount. So that would include the entire cost, but keeping in mind that the MSBA, the state is reimbursing, I believe, 57 percent. So, but the appropriation by law has to be made for the entire amount. So it will seem like a rather large amount.
Yep.
But, you know, at the time, we will let people know again that really, and truly, a Kushner's portion will be, you know, less than half of that, so...
Okay, but this is the time when we need the public to really come together and say, if we want to get the roof done, we need the votes to come through for the article, because otherwise, then we're not able to take the MSBA up on their, on the funding, which, like you mentioned, is even more than half. So this is really the time for people in the town. I know it's going to seem like it's a scary number, and I understand that, but we need to come together and say, in order to get the roof fixed correctly, it's how many years old, we estimate?
It's over 40 years old, so I want, you know, that's a good point. It's not the entire roof of the elementary school, because we did have the renovation, so it's the old section, it's 63,000 square feet. So I don't want people to think after the fact, oh, that was, I thought that was the whole roof. It's not. The whole roof is not eligible because it hasn't met the age requirement yet. So unfortunately, we'll have to do it in two phases.
Okay, so this is for the old portion of the roof, okay.
It's really important that we focus on the outside of our buildings, taking care of the shell of the building, because for us to start dumping money into other projects like tiles and carpets, it's just going to get ruined if the water continues to come through. So we really need to protect the shell of the buildings.
And I remember last town meeting, people, you know, individuals had come up to speak and said, what are we doing about the roof? And there's buckets in the classroom, and it's distracting, and we're here to say, please, come and vote, because we, this is the time now to fix the roof. So, okay, so thank you.
It's a long process, and as of last town meeting, we were already in, we had already made the initial stages of the application, but it is a long and involved process.
And thank you for doing, for doing the work. I know how tedious it is. I know how tedious it is, so thank you. And it's confused, it's a confusing process. So, if anyone's out there and they have questions, please reach out to Mrs. Flynn, because it's confusing, and then you don't understand, and then you don't support it without asking those questions. So, I just ask, if you're confused, please call Mrs. Flynn, so she can answer any questions, because it's important. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
School committee member reports, does anyone have anything?
I will update on Little Toy.
Okay.
I spoke with Julie, our town accountant, and the CPC funds, the Community Preservation Committee, or Community Preservation Account, has well over $100,000 in there. So, as far as this morning, there was just a couple of people putting in for it. So, I'm hoping to get a date for the meeting, which I said last meeting. We're still TBD. We're hoping it's like the first week of March, and that's when I'll need the community support for Little Toy to just support the, the article that I put forward to the CPC. That is to be determined, and we'll put it on Facebook pages, and maybe we can email it out to parents and community members alike.
All right.
Thank you for your work on that, Sarah.
Thank you.
No problem.
Everyone takes it for granted when there's, then when there's nothing there, but we're, we know you're going to get us something.
My grandkids will enjoy it.
Very true.
A lot of work putting an article together, so really appreciate your efforts on that.
Everything, thank you.
Happy to help.
All right, so communication and information, there was some things in our packet, correct? All right, so what everyone's-
Some forms that have gone home to families, baseball, softball, drama club.
Drama club, I saw that, yeah.
The Science Cafe, the YMCA, and the PTO fundraiser.
And dessert fundraiser, okay. We do need to go into executive session tonight, and I do need a roll-call vote to go into executive session. So, at this time, can I have a motion to go into executive session and not to adjourn into regular session? We'll end executive session. Mrs. Downey? Mrs. Gohm?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dar, and I'm a yes. Thank you very much for coming, and we'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Thanks.